Do we have to call to order?
We should call to order because we do have a quorum. So we'll. Who'd like to call the region to order?
Is my Kathy on?
Yeah, Kathy's in the car, so I'm not sure if I'm.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'll call the region to order.
Yes, Sue Lawrence is with us tonight, Chair of this Northborough Committee.
I'll call Northborough to order.
And Paul Desmond.
I'll call Southborough to order.
All right, Heather.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you. This is a webinar format, but we're set up a little bit differently on the school committee format than we were in the other forums. And the other forums with the parents and students and staff, they could only see the panelists. But you are all panelists today, so this is the first time Sean will be able to see everybody who is participating with us.
So much better. I can see people. I'm speaking into like the void without that, you know?
Just a comment too on participation. So the first session with educators, we had 45 participants.
Yes.
And the second with students and families, we had, I believe, a little over 40 participants.
Forty-two. Yes. So, welcome. We have a number of questions. Thank you for submitting some questions in advance. We have quite a few this morning, so we can get started. And first of all, welcome, Sean, to the school committee meeting this morning.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'm really honored to be at this stage in the process. The idea of returning to Algonquin is very exciting, and I look forward to talking with you this morning. Thank you for spending your time with me today.
Excellent. Thank you. So why don't we start off by your sharing with us in the committees, why you're interested in this position and a little bit about your background?
Yeah, so I'm very excited to be considered for joining Algonquin as the leader. And that's really because I started at Algonquin as a young teacher. I was in my second year of teaching. I had just come from a year of teaching in the inner city in Philadelphia, which was fraught with challenges. And we're going to Algonquin where the resources were very strong, the investment from the community was very high. Kids were purposeful, excited to learn, ready to learn. Also, they want to have fun. Those were all, you know, felt like novelties to me, and I loved my work at Philadelphia, but it's a very different environment. And so I spent seven years, really the formative years of being an educator in that building. And actually, it was the old building when I started there, and it was renovated while I was there. And getting to know those students and their families and the community was something that was really exciting, coming from where I was coming from. I was an English teacher for seven years there. I taught mostly sophomores, which is a really fun age to teach. And I taught a lot of juniors as well. And then I also taught journalism and some other classes. But journalism was a really important and fun class to teach because it, for me, was, I taught the kids not just about like newspapers. It taught them about democracy and having student voice and being an advocate for kids. And their interest was a role I played with great energy when I was there. I was a bit of a thorn in the principal's side possibly when I was there, and I could be on the receiving end of it as the principal with a strong newspaper. But that comes with the territory. So then I was doing a lot of different things in my final years at Algonquin and increasing my, just my investment in the community and the very different things I was doing, including coaching and teaching evening classes and teaching PD for staff. I looked at ways I could increase my, I was basically becoming a leader in the building and looking for ways to enhance that leadership. I got my principal's certificate, and there was not a position opened at Algonquin, and I only applied to one place. And I applied to Westwood because it was the right fit for me. It was a school where their value, how much they valued education was as close as any to Algonquin that I had seen. So I applied to one place, and I was lucky to get that and really enjoyed that work. Two years later, the principal was promoted to assistant superintendent, and I applied for and was named the principal, and I've been there for nine years. And in that nine years, I've improved my leadership skill and really refined my abilities as a leader in that time and learned a great deal about curriculum and instruction and student advocacy and working with teachers and navigating unions and all the things that you don't learn as a teacher, I learned in nine years and got pretty good at and really have enjoyed. And I love my school. I love the community. I think every day is a privilege to go into that building and that community and serve that community. And I would not be excited to leave it, except I'm excited to go back to a place where I got my start. So I've only applied to one position in the entire time I've been there. I've applied to one principal job, and that's this one because it's so attractive to return to Northborough and Southborough where I got my start and to see how the community has evolved, the communities have evolved, and to work with teachers who, some of them I know, but many of them I don't. So the chance to marry my leadership skill with the educator skills I built when I was there is entirely unique. And I don't think it probably will come up again in a very long period of time. So I felt like, as worried as I am about leaving, as sad as I would be to go from my current building, and I think they'd be sad for me to go, I'm excited to take a new leap professionally to marry my leadership and educator skills.
Okay, thank you. And if you could please describe what an effective school principal is in just three words, what would they be?
Three words? Oh, my gosh. I would say approachable would be the first. Strategic would be the second. And integrity would be the third. Now, as an English teacher, I just married a noun with adjectives, and I'm going to be regretting that all day and rethinking that answer. But I would say, you know, being approachable, having high integrity, and being strategic in how you apply your leadership. I think those are the three, you know, three things I would say. It's a tough question, but I don't know. That's my best crack at it.
Thank you. And if you could please share with us, what are some of the academic or technological initiatives that you've led in the past few years?
Yeah, so Westwood was the first, the first one-to-one Chromebook school in the Commonwealth. So that was seven or eight years ago. I don't even remember. And rolling that out was really, I wouldn't even say tricky. It just required a great deal of paving the way to make sure students were ready for it, teachers were prepared and trained. But also, as a leader, I needed to model the ability to use these new devices and to use technology well. So being on the vanguard of technology is not possible unless the principal is able to speak to it well and also use it well. You know, you can't be the principal who bungles technology and be in a technologically advanced school. So modeling that was really critical. And I also really enjoy technology and, as a teacher, saw lots of, you know, it was a very exciting time to be a teacher. My first teaching job, I taught at an actual literal blackboard with chalk and screechy chalk. And now here we are on a Zoom call, you know, 20 years later. And so things move very quickly. And so you need to model adopting sensible platforms when they come along and do those well. So that would be how to launch technology or to kind of model that is important. And then academic changes are really, you know, every day we're trying to get changes to take root in my building that result in greater academic achievement. And so every year we take on some new ones. Some of them are department-specific and some of them are building-wide, so we'll give you an example of each. This year, we are doing a, we pushed our, we changed our sequence of our science curriculum so that it was more in line with what the state frameworks expect and also best for kids. And so I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, but it took a major shift in how we assign teachers and how we taught kids who were struggling learners, those ninth graders. So that was, took about 18 months of preparing my staff and kids for that. And I led a mini-committee, a small committee with my science staff to make sure we were prepared for that. And we were getting good results, but I think the, you know, the closing of, related to the pandemic, will prevent us from really knowing just how well-prepared we were and how they performed. So I think we'll have to wait till those results come in next year. And then for school-wide, I'm always, every year we're identifying a shortlist of things that we think need to change. And this year, we took on homework. And that can be a minefield. In a lot of schools, teachers feel really proprietary about how they assign homework, what it counts for, what their expectations of kids are. And yet, it results in, you know, hours and hours of kids investing time in it later in every day. And so I think it's incumbent upon the principal to roll up their sleeves and know what the homework culture is in their building and to make changes if it needs to happen. So that was something we took on this year and got, we're getting good results on it until we closed. And I think that that time will, you know, that work will continue next year, even if I'm not there.
Thank you. Thinking about your prior experience at Algonquin, how would you go in and assess where we are? And with your experience as a principal, what things would you like to bring to Algonquin?
That's an excellent question. I think my first role, my first responsibility would be to, as quickly as possible, achieve an accurate sense for what's going really well and stay out of the way of that or perpetuate that or maintain that. But then identify what's not going well and to find ways to improve those areas. So I would develop an entry plan with Ms. Martino's help to figure out what constituent groups do I need to meet with and speak with and hear from. And those probably would be Zoom calls. And I think that work would probably have to begin before you go into the summer so that you can be strategic about how you spend your time over the summer to prepare for the year. So trying to figure out what the initiatives are that Greg has going into this coming year and how they marry with my vision for the school. And then layering in what kids say they really love about Algonquin and what kids and adults too say these are areas we need to improve on. She's a little bit hard to answer that because I haven't been in that building in a long time. I haven't been in my own building in a long time. So trying to figure out, you know, what's working would be the work I would have to take on with great enthusiasm and expediency in the coming month, you know? But I think my guess is figuring out what the culture is and if there are things about the culture itself that need improving. That's a thing I do really well, and I think I could make, as quick as any leader can, I would be able to adjust a culture if that's an area that needs work. And if it's not, all the better. I can work on the other things that need my immediate attention.
Thank you. And what kind of strategies have you used to ensure students remain engaged and enjoy school and to instill school spirit?
Yeah, so we developed a program that, there's only really two other schools doing something similar, and we all developed them independent of each other and launched them in about the same year or two periods. So two years ago, we launched our first-ever J-Term. And J-Term was a program conceptualized by my superintendent, and then she and I worked on it really closely for about 18 months to build out. And in June of 2018, we did our first program. And what that looked like was we pushed final exams up by five days. And we used that five-day period for kids to enroll in full-time, everyday courses in an area that they were passionate about. And so those courses, we had 38 or 39, were courses, some of them were academic, like the historical roots of hip-hop or genealogy. And some of them were experiential, like how to build a catapult, which was a course I was developing for this year. And some of them were hands-on, like had a, we had one called Top Chef Westwood, where kids got to learn how to cook, and then they had a competition at the end. And so it was really like a celebration of learning header. It was just, for five days, kids didn't worry about grades. They didn't worry about, teachers didn't have to worry about kids cutting class. Kids just showed up to school every day to learn because they were excited to learn something new and to experience something with enthusiasm and excitement. It's a tall order to pull that off for 180 days, but are, you know, what we were hoping to do and have seen some growth in is to try to bring some of that spirit into the building for regular, everyday, you know, more ordinary classes. So J-Term is something we're really proud about. If you have a chance to check it out on my resume, there's a link to it. You can see what the courses we've offered. And getting kids excited about it wasn't very hard. Getting adults to give up some days off of the calendar and to then take on something totally new outside of their regular work was a steep challenge, and it took a lot of work, but the results were very exciting.
Okay, thank you. And so thinking about different activities, there's a lot of things that are happening, sometimes simultaneously at a new school. And how do you ensure that you're visible at a variety of events?
Yeah, so my strategy, Heather, for doing that is I go to everything, stay for nothing. You just can't go to every last thing and stay to the, you know, and people don't expect that, you know? If I get to see a JV soccer game and I get to see 10 or 15 minutes of that, that's, you know, I enjoy that, and I enjoy athletics specifically. And parents understand that I have other obligations, and there's another game across the, you know, the campus to get over to. One thing that I've really enjoyed doing is I have a really good relationship with my athletic director currently. I actually know Mr. Maserino pretty well because we coached baseball together for many years. And the ability to like hop into the golf cart and to get out to a bunch of different things on the same sunny afternoon is really like, it's not even a chore. It's actually really enjoyable to see kids, you know, doing something they're really excited about. And then I'd say the same is true of the performing arts and the other areas kids are enjoying about, you know, their school. Their school experience isn't always what's happening in school. It's that they have a club, a Model U1 club or a DECA event, and getting out to those as much as your time permits is really important. So I would say it's important. I think it's a requirement of the principal to be visible at events and other things in the community. But also, it's not, you know, it's fun. My daughters are now 11 and 13, and they've been to many, many school events because they enjoy it. They like seeing the Spring Musical and, you know, the art show, and they've come with me to the prom, you know? I try to communicate to my kids and families, my students and my families and my staff that like, you know, we're one big family, and here are my kids, and they're part of that family. And I think that would, they might not be as excited anymore now that they're getting into high school age. It was fun when they were younger, and I think that's important, is letting families know that, you know, I'm excited to be here and it's my family, and we're celebrating this, you know, this moment together.
Thank you. So we've received some questions in advance, and a couple have come up on chat too. So I'm going to hopefully weave them together. So please share with us how you've worked with multiple stakeholders, parents, PTOs, and the communities. And can you specifically speak to, have you worked with them with fundraising?
Sure. And yeah, so the things I, the mechanisms I've used most effectively to build up stakeholder partnerships have been ones that previously existed, but that then I improved upon. So every school is required to have a school council, and to have that be an advisory group to the principal is like literally in the regulations for what principals need to do. But I will say I've been on school councils for my own children's schools and found them to be, you know, compliance exercises where the principal is like reporting out on things because they're required to. The spirit in which I've taken on that group is to embrace that that group is designed to give me advice and to understand what's going on in the school community. And those parents are truly elected to give me the feedback I need to know. And that I've increased the student participation in that from one, when I took over, to eight, which is currently now two for each grade, and they give a great deal of important feedback, and that is not a group. And we have our last meeting today, which is going to be really sad because they know that I'm a candidate here. And I always use this last meeting as a chance to celebrate our students who participated because most of the, you know, the seniors will be moving on. So we'll have a little bit of a mini-celebration for kids who've been part of that group. It's a two-year term for the kids and the adults. As far as fundraising goes, I have not been a participant in a great deal of fundraising enterprises at Westwood. I was formerly a grant writer in my work leading up to becoming a teacher. And so what I've done quite a bit of is to figure out what are our grant-funding kind of opportunities in our community and write grants for important school enterprises, or school initiatives. So we have really great community support, but it requires some completion of, you know, the grants to get that done. But I will go backwards a little bit more than that is it's important to foster and maintain a good relationship with those grant funders. So it's hard to go and ask the Foundation for Education for money if you've said no to all their requests for you to help to support them over the years. So it's a two-way street sometimes there, and, you know, I think I have managed that well.
Thank you. And our educators leverage differentiated learning on a regular basis. And can you speak to how you, how you work with different subgroups and such as gifted students, you know, English language learners, special education students, and how you support educators in supporting those students?
Yeah, so I'm a dad of, I have two daughters, and one of my daughters has, is on an IP and needs pretty significant support at school that has started to recede as she gets through the middle school, and her abilities have increased. So I'm very much aware of the needs of our students and families who need a little bit more support and how that feels when that support's not there. So I can tell you, like, as a consumer, what that looks like, and that's informed my, you know, my leadership of the school that that thing, we need to support our kids who need the support the most. But I think on the other end of the spectrum, we have a lot of kids who want to push themselves really, you know, significantly and that they want more choice in how to do that. And so I've tried to balance that as well. And so under my leadership, in nine years, we've expanded significantly our student electives and the kind of opportunities kids have to learn more than they were when I took over. And so our participation in APs have increased significantly. But also, our participation in courses that they're just excited to take because they like scratch an itch academically for them has expanded significantly too. I will say one of the challenges of that, just to be frank, is that when you give lots of choice, somebody loses at some point. So there's some courses and some electives that just are not going to be able to compete with a highly academic elective course that's going to really shine on a resume. And now we're faced with, you know, trimming back in areas that seem like we would always have them. And so sometimes it's hard to support academics as an elective choice and have that not come at the expense of performing arts or, you know, one of the visual arts. So you can't have it always at all times. So I think part of the job of the principal is figuring out, you know, what are the things that, you know, kids are voting with their elective choices, but how do you not let that, you know, spoil really wonderful opportunities for non-academic choices? So matching that balance is something that I'm doing currently because we're looking at our section allotments for next year, and it's really on my mind a lot. You know, there can be an intersection between kids' choice and the larger health of the, you know, the health of the larger program of studies. That's a balance we're struggling with right now. I think a lot of schools probably are.
Okay, thank you. And vaping has been a problem in a lot of high schools across the country. How have you handled or how have you approached the vaping issue?
Yeah, I mean, I wish I had a better answer for this. This is just a challenge in every school building. And I shared in the previous interview that it was even worse in my building where our, for whatever reason, our fire alarm systems were extra sensitive. And so we were getting not only the scourge of kids crowding our bathrooms, breaking rules, but sometimes those were setting off fire alarms. So there was a lot of school disruptions that were really irritating at best and kind of worrisome at worst. So what we've done a great deal of is to bring in, you know, parent speaker events to inform parents about how they can be best equipped to know what the science is, for one thing. But then what parenting strategies can they apply if they find a device in their child's backpack? And so informing parents has been a strategy there. And then technical solutions that we've tried that have had mixed results have been, I wrote a grant for vape detectors in our buildings that a lot of schools have tried, and those had mixed results, frankly. You know, we piloted them, and they seemed like they were getting good results. But then when we brought them to scale, they, you know, they presented some challenges earlier in this year. And right now, we are in a bit of a holding pattern on that. So I think education is going to be always an important part of prevention. That's part of it. I think working with state and local, especially local folks, to limit access for kids is another key element of prevention. If you look at prevention science, that's really a key part, is education access, limiting access is another part of it. And then being really dogged in following up with kids when you see that it's a problem in your building. But I don't, I, you know, I'm the only male on our administrative staff, so it was a real challenge culturally in my building where if the principal's the only person who can like go into the bathroom to intervene if there's a crowd in there, it was, you know, a real challenge for me to maintain my educational leadership while having this like kind of quiet and persistent issue in the building. I would say we don't have a perfect solution for it, but trying and trying and trying again is, I think, how we're all as a community, the whole state's going to get some improvement on that issue.
Thank you, Sean. So the next couple of questions from our school committee members. The first question is, reflecting back on the first two sessions this morning, was there a question or questions that were asked that were difficult to answer or that you wished you had answered differently?
Yeah, I'd say, Greg, the toughest question is, what would you change, basically? I can't remember how it was asked, but you know, what changes would you make most immediately? And the tough part about that is, in our current environment, it's really difficult to get a pulse, a sense for what the appetite for change is and what the issues that need changing are. Because, you know, mistakenly, a major, an issue that I could run into is going in with a great deal of energy on an area for change that the community doesn't agree is requiring change. And then also not making change happen where it does need to happen. So I'd say that that's the toughest question because I don't know that I have a good answer for it. Is I need to spend some time getting information and not spin my wheels and just like analyze things to death before making change happen. But, you know, people understand that the principal's job is to make change happen. But to do that in an informed way is going to be important to do, but also really hard to do now, right? So if I can't be in the building and interface with a crowd of kids to find out what they like about their school experience, and I can do it on Zoom, I suppose, which is, I think, what we'll have to do, it's going to be hard to develop a vision for change because my ability to understand the, you know, the strengths and weaknesses is just not what it might be in an ordinary environment, you know?
Thank you. So the next question is around the pandemic and the economic climate. And is Westwood anticipating any significant, you know, shortfalls in terms of revenue with the upcoming year? And how would you mitigate or how would you strategize around changing funding?
Yeah, we're beginning those discussions because we don't have a perfectly clear picture. I think actually tomorrow I'll be meeting with my, the other principals and the principal leadership team to game plan what it might look like if we have to make some reductions. And I think the first step in that, Greg, is to agree on some core principles first. So it's very easy to fall into the trap of starting to identify solutions to the issue without agreeing first on, you know, what are we not going to give up or what would be the last to go? Or what are the things that are nice to have, but, you know, we could live without? And so we've already had those, that kind of table-setting discussion that has softened the ground for conversations about, you know, about what might need to go if we're required to. So I would, I think that that table-setting is beginning, and I've already started that with my leadership team. And then from there, to make decisions, I think we have to balance out, there are only so many places where you can trim back if you're an efficient organization. There are just not that many places that are, there's not a lot of dead weight, right? So either you're looking at reducing some programs or reducing some student choice or increasing class sizes, you know, or reducing some services to kids. So, you know, we have staff members in varied positions, and if we had to cut back on any of them, there'd be some impact because they're having impact now when they're in their full form. So if you were to reduce a position by half, suddenly that might mean half the amount of kids get that service. So trying to prioritize which ones can go. Class size would be one I'm not eager to increase. I think we're in a pretty good spot. We might have places where you could look for nominal changes and only result in manageable increases to class size. But I don't want to see kids in classes of 25, 26, 27s trying to learn chemistry if it can be avoided. So we're trying to prioritize programmatic, class-size changes and services and figuring out what, you know, what we're willing to tolerate. And then work as a team with my fellow principals to figure out, how can we as a community figure out what changes we can tolerate together?
Thank you. So we're short of time.
Oh, that keeps happening. I'm sorry, Greg.
No, it's, a half an hour is not a lot of time.
No, it's not.
But I can ask one question you have, I'll give you 61 seconds to answer.
Okay.
The question really is around your communication style and strategy. Oftentimes, a high school principal Oftentimes the high school principal, the only way the parents interact with the high school principal oftentimes is through the written word. What is your communication style and strategy?
Yeah, I think it just needs to be diverse in order to be effective. So you can't just use one email strategy that works for everybody because not everybody is on top of their email. I think you need to, for parents particularly and the rest of the community, you need to use social media. You need to use newsletters. You need to have events where parents can interact with you. And then you need to look for your opportunities where parents are interacting already and maximize those. So our curriculum night or our open house night, I've reshaped entirely in the last several years to make it very much an effort, you know, an event where parents can understand not just like what their kid's, teacher's homework policy is, but what is their child's experience like in this class? How did they actually learn in here? So I think you need to look at all of those different things because not one is going to work for everybody. So you've got to, to do your best on all of them. Because if you do well on all of them as best you can, you're going to get to as many people as possible. So I think there's not one singular thing. There's multiple, you know, and you got to try your hand at all.
Thank you. So thank you, Mr. Bevan, for your time.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I will say that I did speak to the Westwood superintendent and she would be thrilled if Sean was not up for this position. So thank you, school committee members, for participating as well. And there is a feedback survey that if you could take a second to complete, that would be very helpful as we continue to make the decision of the next principal of Algonquin. And the last thing we'll need to do is call the meeting, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
So move for Northborough?
Second for Northborough?
I don't think we have a quorum for Southborough, so we're good.
Do we have to roll call?
We'll do a roll call.
Yes. Call.
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathleen? Dan?
Yes.
And Jessica?
Yes.
And Kelly?
Yes.
All right, Sean, it was very nice to meet you and thank you for taking the time for us.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for your service to the communities. I look forward to meeting you in person someday, I hope.
Thanks, Sean.